Yep, we won't make it. I'm gonna call the September 2nd meeting of the West Des Moines City Council to order and invite you all to stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to defy the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, nothing like a strong gavel getting people woken up. Please sign in.
Yeah, always. I don't get any hearings, so.
Four members present.
Okay, Ryan, have there been any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Your Honor.
I get a motion to approve the agenda as distributed.
It's moved.
Second.
Get some move and second it, please vote.
For yes.
Okay, item two, Citizens Forum. Anybody that would like to address the council on any item that is not either part of public hearings or new business, please come to the podium here, give us your name and address for the record. We ask that you keep it civil and respectful and five minutes or under. All right, Vicki, start us off.
I can't see it though. Didn't you guys watch it?
Yeah, I went to YouTube.
If you could, people online, if you could just mute yourself until you're ready to address the council, I would appreciate it. Thank you so much. Okay, Vicki, take us away.
Yes. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Dr. Vicki Longhill, 136 10th Street, and I stand before you today as it relates to an item that's on the consent agenda. Is it appropriate at this time to address that?
Yes, absolutely.
Great. So it's consent item M5, and it relates to the Valley Junction alley improvements, Phase 10. So it's been about a year and a half or more that I've come before the council to address one alley, which is, the alley is located on the east side of 10th Street, from Railroad going north to Maple. Although, all alleys have been paved, and you know how long my mother and father worked on this, were so gracious that all alleys were be, uh, have been paved, except that one. So we have that alley on the east side of 10th Street that has not been paved. There may have been some discussion about, um, all the residents may not have been in agreement. So, a year and a half or so ago, I did approach and knock on the residents' doors, and they were in agreement, but for one, I believe it was Ms. Shine Flu, Tina. But, in addition to that, you have a business that is right there on that alley on Railroad, between 10th and 9th Street, the Colorado, I believe it's Colorado Feed, and for years, the food truck now has also been parked there, generating a lot of traffic coming and going. So, again, I'm bringing this before the city because that alley was to be paved. It's the only alley in Valley Junction with the paving project that was not paved. And I do know I was part of the, the rallying and the neighborhood coming forth to get this accomplished for many years, and that was included. So, I come before the city council to ask that possibly have that removed from the consent decree for discussion, some type of answer. I did speak with Sir Ryan, I don't know for sure.
Brian.
Right? Right.
Ryan, probably.
Yes, I did speak to him in regards to it, and I believe, and he can speak better to that than I can. I believe the response was, um, I don't know if the sewer work has been done, or the other phases prior to the concrete lane of the driveway has been done. But in any event, what is the decision, and when is that gonna get done?
I guess I would just question, Vicki, you want us to pull this tonight and hold this up so that we can have a discussion on the other part of the alley?
That is correct.
Okay.
You asked me?
Yeah, I guess that's what you want, is you wanna delay everybody else getting their portion of the alley paved, so that we can have this conversation?
Absolutely.
Because I'm wondering if we could do that and to have a conversation?
I'm not for delaying it.
Okay.
But I do want an answer, and I do want an answer that satisfy, whatever point, timeline, and I did speak to our representative councilman Trevillion as well as Councilwoman Hardman about this matter. So I do want a resolution-
Sure.
-that resolves in that alley being paved. It may be that you have to do some structural work, sewer work, you know, I think you have to do gravel and things before you even-
Okay.
Whatever it takes, I want it to be put on the agenda and given the same attention that all of the other Valley Junction alley projects.
Okay, so are you okay if we leave it on tonight, approve that tonight, but we have a conversation after tonight's meeting with Brian and others about the paving of-
Yeah, we can bring this up at Public Services next Monday. I think we've had a conversation about this, Brian, I know I'm getting old and forgetful, but I think it's been a year or so ago, and if memory serves me correctly, the alley improvements had not been done because not everybody signed off on it, correct? So, Brian, why don't you come up forward, so you can answer this specifically, because I'm gonna ask if all, if the notices went back out to the property owners, asking them at this time, have you had a change of mind, and now you want the improvements made? Because if that's the case, then, yeah, it'll get tacked on to, because there's still alleys that yet to be paved. We've got some, obviously, in this, but, um, it'd get, and that's what I explained to Vicki, was that, you know, if, if we do this, and everybody's in favor of it, that it would get tacked on at the end, we're not gonna move it forward. So can you answer, have the property owners more recently been surveyed if they want the alley improvements done?
So Brian, having said city engineer, they have not.
Okay. We will talk about it, Vicki, at Public Services, and, and make sure that we get this on, on the, you know, in the pipeline to get the survey done, and if we get the property owners signing off, that they will get us, let us on their property. It's not so much that, do you want it or not, will, it's more of, will you give us access to your property to make these needed improvements, and then put everything back, you know, rest, restore it and all that? Initially, that was a no among the majority of the property owners, so we weren't able to, sometimes we've been able to work around it, one or two property owners, but I think it was significant, and that's why it got passed. But we'll talk about it Monday at Public Services.
Okay. I look forward to coming to the public, uh, meeting, but I have since, maybe the survey went out two or three years ago, I've since knocked on each of the residents and spoke to the property owners. They're in favor of it. However, it's my understanding, I can be wrong, but it's my understanding if there's a business that use that alley as a throwaway, that it would be paved anyway, something like what Casey's is. And so you have Colorado Feed, as well as a food truck, that uses that space, right at, uh, the alley at the Railroad to Maple, and there's a lot of trucks.
Well, you're correct, that, and again, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the, the decision was made years ago, when we decided to go down this path of making the improvements and then paving them, um, that if the alley was used for delivery of products to the businesses, um, but I know with Casey's, they paved, as did Polk County Senior Center, they paved what was adjacent to their property. So, again, I don't know if Colorado, whatever it's called, is using it for, because they got a driveway off of, um, the main street as well, so I don't know if they're using that for deliveries and such, but, yeah, we'll, we'll talk about it on Monday, I guarantee it, and get some-
And I'd like to be there, and I can, I did do a petition. I left it after I spoke with several of the property owners. I left it with Clifford Campbell, who's right on the corner of 9th and Maple. So, now, what we did three or four years ago, you have new property owners possibly too.
Okay, so Kevin, when is, when is your, when is your meeting on Monday?
Next Monday at 11:30.
Monday at 11:30?
Upstairs.
Upstairs, Vicki, be there if you want to discuss this issue, and we will go from there.
Otherwise, there's an on, um, on the phone option as well, if you're not able to physically be at the meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vicki, appreciate it. Anybody else for Citizens Forum?
Thanks, Brian.
Please, go ahead. No, wait, go ahead, Blake.
All right, come on up, give us your name and address for the record, and again, five minutes or under. Civil and respectful.
Can I, uh, time it, just so I say what's in the-
He's timing it.
Yeah, I'm timing it.
Yeah, he's timing it.
Well, sometimes I need to keep myself.
She needs, she can do her own timer.
Yep.
It's all good. Nope, I just wanna make sure, I'm respectful of that.
Okay.
Okay, so my name is Blake Buffington, I live at 3809 Western Hills Drive. I'm also a third-generation homeowner in West Des Moines in my family, and I've come here tonight to address all of you regarding the recent council discussion on e-bikes. So, at the last meeting, there was indication that there was maybe some controversy about e-bikes, and maybe making some changes or reviewing that, and really, my ask is just simple, I'd like you to keep the laws, the regulations, and the city guidelines as they are right now. I think that there's plenty of people in our city that have been able to follow the guidelines as they are, but as you know, there are always gonna be people that stretch those, those laws. While I have empathy for any resident that has experienced vandalism, property damage, or has felt harassed, I truly feel like that's something for the West Des Moines Police Department to handle. That isn't gonna be handled by changing regulations on bicycles. Um, and, and with that said, you know, the description that I heard at the August 18th meeting clearly seemed like a property issue that then quickly escalated to focus on bicycles. And I think those are two very separate issues. Um, again, I think that if it is truly a disturbance on a property, or infringing on a property, that's for the police, if a criminal action took place. If the review, I guess, of e-bike regulations is about bike use at Western Hills School or Western Hills Park, I'm a member of that community and live directly across the street. My children have attended that school, we are part of that community very avidly, and I agree that we should not tolerate vandalism or property damage in the park or the school. But the use of a bike, or its intended purpose, is not inherently causing property damage, from what I have witnessed. Um, and so, I don't feel that the majority of the use at that space is diminishing the value of the property. With that being said, I could give you a lot of statistics, I could give you a lot of information, I could share a lot of things with you, I'm sure, and a multitude of reasons why e-bikes are used, and the regulations currently surrounding them, um, but I hope that as council members, you'll realize that it simply doesn't need to be justified or redefined. Um, unfortunately, we always have people, as one council member mentioned at the last meeting, that will use tools incorrectly, but that doesn't mean that we take tools away from people. And I hope that the council can put this review to rest, and not take any further action to change any of our bike, trail, or park laws or regulations specifically related to that purpose of that space. Um, I ask you again, please to leave that green space as it is, and the school as it is, not only for the residents that currently use it, that have yards and space of their own, but for the great majority of the population that that particular school and park serve to people that do not have their own yards, that are not owning their own property, that use that and should use that as safe space, especially for the children that it serves, quite honestly. Um, let's allow our city's residents to enjoy the outdoors, and not confuse maybe what one resident's agenda is against e-bikes, cast a very wide net on unnecessary and what I view as unjustified city change, overreaching on e-bikes. I think that your time as council members, mayor, our city municipalities, such as our police and first responders, could be better used than patrolling children on e-bikes, and I hope that you all can find it, I guess, to consider that as well, my perspective on this. I appreciate the time that you've given me today. I know that others have invited you to their homes, they've had conversations outside of this five minutes. I kept my nine to five minutes within the regulations. You have my address, you have my information, you're welcome to come to my home anytime and talk about this further. I just really hope that we don't have to. I hope we can put it just to rest, that there are two very different subjects that we're dealing with here, and that we don't have to, uh, you know, cast this wide net and confuse the issue really at heart here. I appreciate all your time, I wish you all the best in your upcoming elections, and thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else for Citizens Forum?
Yes.
Okay, come on up.
Thank you, Blake, I'm glad you're here tonight. Rich Stevens, 545th Street, West Des Moines, longtime West Des Moines resident, and on the same subject. So regarding motorcycles and e-bikes in the public park at Western Hills Park. So, e-bikes create two distinct hazards on city property near Western Hills Elementary, near the stormwater retention basin. The part of the basin affected is on city property. It's used as a stunt park by e-bikers and e-motorcyclists, something far beyond an e-bike. Signage and policy can eliminate the risks for less than 180 bucks. So, one hazard, the first one, is that an airborne e-bike's gonna land on an unsuspecting child, or collide with a person walking through the public park right-of-way directly west of the basin. That's on page two of your handout, if you wanna feel for how that's laid out. So the likely collision is right at the blind alley, um, that's where kids are landing the e-bikes. So both the pond basin and the entrance to the public right-of-way are blind in their approach to the path used by e-bikers as they perform stunts on city property. Worse, no biker can see just what's over the berm until they're airborne, so the collision hazard is on both sides of the berm, on school property, as well as on city property. So look at it this way, the city enables 14-year-olds flying electric bikes in the same space where five-year-olds are flying kites and playing soccer. The e-bikes land at a blind alley at the city park entrance, what could go wrong here? Of all the places to choose to have a stunt park, this is the worst place I can imagine. The geography is just unique. So the hazard constitutes an attractive nuisance for which the city would likely be liable. The second hazard, and a significant financial liability to the city, is that the pond infrastructure has been damaged, and the property damages obvious and ongoing and regular, through the deep grooves cutting the vegetation into the side of the berm by e-bikes. These are in the pictures in the way-too-long-to-read handout that I gave you. So the damage could result in the failure of the stormwater structure. That berm has held 1.4 million gallons of water, as much as nine feet above adjacent residential housing. It failed to operate as designed and overflowed on July 20th, 2025, while I was on the second day of RAG-BRI. So the pictures of that are on page three. The water there was about 26 inches deep. So, the grooves in the city park side of the berm are getting deeper every day as more e-bikers use the berm to fly e-bikes. E-bikes are unique in this manner, is that they give torque to the wheel without the pedals moving, and through 360 degrees, much better for removing turf. So, the berm could fail quickly, as saturated dirt without turf cover is easily eroded, until water flows through the berm at a high rate. The drain was already plugged once, through an act of vandalism resulting in the loss of the grass inside the pond basin. That led to a fugitive dust problem and other nuisance. Standing water also bred more mosquitoes, another nuisance. So look at it this way, the city allows people to cut slots in a stormwater basin that holds 12 million pounds of water above 12 adjacent homes. If it were to fail, it would likely fail during a large storm event where people are seeking shelter. That water would fill at least 20 basements. Again, what could go wrong here? The solution is simple, costing less than 180 bucks, create a city parks policy restricting e-bike use to hard surfaces or marked paths in city parks. This policy is already present in city park published guidelines, and then post it. That enables West Des Moines PD clarity to enforce the law. But the tougher solution, and the pictures at the back of the, the handout I want you to see, find another place for the kids to jump e-bikes. It's important for kids to defy gravity, seriously, it's what makes great adults. So the two pictures that I have there, picture this saturated ground on page three, um, and that is what my neighbor's yard looked like on January 20th. The basin is full, what if that basin were to break, where would that water go? I can tell you where it would've went on July 20th. Lastly, I wanted you to think about branding a little bit. A lack of e-bike policy means that bullies are enabled, and I witnessed that just last night with an adult, no less. An adult that felt the need to tell me that he knew my daughter was a sophomore at Valley High, and wouldn't identify himself, but I'll tell you what, you talk about a neighborhood consensus, everybody's looking for this guy. White BMW, parked up the street, acted like he didn't own the car. So, also, recently, e-bikes were observed, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you to both of you for being here and speaking on this issue. You know, we do pride ourselves in being very responsive to our constituents, and we always look into things, especially when public safety is alleged. It doesn't mean that we're gonna take a certain action, or not take a certain action, but when concerns are brought to us, we take those seriously, and we look into them, and do, do our research, and, um, listen to both sides of the issue. And so I believe we're gonna do that, we're gonna have a time that one of our subcommittee, this is, this is exactly what these subcommittees are designed for, is to hear issues like this, and, um, provide a recommendation to, to move forward, to not move forward, um, but those are just advisory, okay? The full council are the ones that make the final decision. But, Deputy Manager Lettsring, could you tell me, when is the date that we're gonna be taking this issue up? Do we know?
Uh, I think Subcommittee said their meeting October 2nd.
October 2nd, okay, do we know where that meeting is, October 2nd? And what time?
What Subcommittee?
It's pub, it's Public Safety Subcommittee, right?
Yes.
Friday the 3rd, October 3rd.
Oh, well, I think that they're discussing moving it to the Thursday.
Okay.
Okay, Thursday, October 2nd.
I don't think that we have the details about the time and the place.
Can we notify both of you?
We will, we will notify both of you, um, the time and the place of this meeting, okay? Thank you for both being here, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else for Citizens Forum in the chamber, before we go online? Come on up, Taste of the Junction, Rochelle, very successful event. Congratulations. All right, give us your name and address for the record.
Rochelle Long, 106 11th Street, West Des Moines, and standing as Director of Taste of the Junction, I just want to pop in to say thank you, thank you, thank you for the city, uh, supporting the event every night was, um, so successful, and to have the majority of the council and the mayor show up at the event, it's more than the financial support, but then to see you physically supporting the event, it meant more than my words can say, so I just wanted to pop in to say thank you, I hope you all had a great time, and, um, to let you know that the hotel motel tax dollars are well spent, um, we, um, you know, we don't have much to spend, but we try to make the most of every night, and every night was kinda like a standing room only crowd, so I just wanna say thank you, because we, without your support, we're not able to keep offering these free community building, um, events, so I just wanted to stop and say thank you, thank you, and thank you.
Thank you so much, congratulations, it was, uh, it was a fun time, it was a great event, and I was honored to be there, so, Councilwoman Hardman.
Um, yeah, I'd just like to say, and it was on my list of, um, things when we get to the council reports, but I'll, I'll take care of it tonight, right now. First of all, Rochelle, I wanna say thank you. The Taste of the Junction is, has grown over the years, it's a celebration of culture and food in West Des Moines, this is where we started. I was there on, uh, Saturday along with other fellow council members, um, you'll have to give us lessons how to get to that camera thing, and show them what they're supposed to be doing during that time, but it was a fun time to be had by all. I wanna thank you, I know it is a lot, a lot, a lot of work putting it together, but to see such rich diversity in one place, um, in the corner of West Des Moines, in a place where West Des Moines started, it made my heart proud. So, I just wanna say, I wish you much success in future Taste of the Junction events, congratulations, well done, and you, you lifted up West Des Moines, and this part of West Des Moines, in ways that I haven't seen before, so thank you very, very much.
Okay.
I have Max on the board, and-
Yep, Councilman McKinney's on the, uh, the board, and planning, and all that stuff, so.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, of course, I was gonna share some comments, but I'll, I'll share it now, and I'll just say, Rochelle, to you and, and the whole board, uh, and it is a working board, um, a lot of work goes into those three days, and it was a very successful three days, you know, really celebrating, like, you know, Councilwoman Hardman said, uh, the people and, and the culture and cuisine, but, you know, hearing the stories, uh, and, you know, the, the history, and, and helping retell those stories, and what has, you know, where our community started, and now seeing where it is today, um, it is always important to look back and, and appreciate those that came before us, and the work that they did, and, and, uh, and so, it, I'm saying a lot to say, it was a great event, and thanks for all the work you do to bring everybody together, uh, to celebrate these things. Like I said, it was Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday night, and each event was extremely well-attended, so congratulations.
Okay, with that, is there anybody else in the chamber for Citizens Forum, before I go online? Okay, seeing nobody moving, anybody online for Citizens Forum, please hit star six, do unmute yourself and give us your name and address for the record. Again, star six, not pound six. Is there anybody online that would like to address the council? Okay, Citizens Forum is closed, we'll move on to item three, Mayor, Council, Manager Report, Other Entities Update, and I will start down to my right with Deputy City Manager, Lettsring. Any report? Okay, Councilman Hudson.
Well, I probably should've said this a second ago, but, uh, Taste of the Junction, thank you for a great event, and, um, it was awesome to see so many folks out, just delightful, so congratulations on another great year of Taste of the Junction, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilman, Councilman McKinney.
Okay, just a couple, uh, quick items, uh, to the folks that were here, uh, I think, Rich and Blake, I wanna let you know, we also, um, I serve on the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and, uh, last week, it was last week, about 10 days or so ago, we had our annual meeting, or not our annual meeting, our, uh, monthly meeting in August, and, and, uh, our city manager, Tom Haddon, was there, he's not here tonight, but, um, this topic actually came up, not specifically related to issues in West Des Moines, but the topic of e-bikes generally was brought up, and, um, there were members, and the Metropolitan Planning Organization is an organization of communities from across the metro area that get together, talk about transportation-related issues, and e-bikes, transportation-related. Um, I, I certainly appreciate the sentiment you both shared, right? I, uh, I can appreciate, uh, the need to have the, you know, the, would you say, experience free air, or something along those lines?
Free air.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, you want kids to be kids, and to get out and enjoy the outdoors, and, you know, we have so many quality life amenities in West Des Moines, we really do celebrate that and, and support it, but we do it in a respectful manner, right? And I think that's, uh, Blake, the, the message you were saying, is, you know, there are, there are things that we can regulate, and there's, um, and, and tools that we can regulate, whether you use them appropriately or inappropriately. And it sounds like this is a issue that has been coming up in various cities across, uh, the metro, bringing it back to this MPO discussion, and apparently, there is a, uh, there is a group of cities that is actively evaluating maybe a, uh, metro-wide kind of policy, and so, um, I just wanted to let you both know that, um, you know, this is a, not just a West Des Moines conversation, this is a metro conversation, um, and, you know, I'll, I'll reiterate what I shared last time, and that is, you know, there are tools we can use for good, and the same tools will get me used for bad, and I think it's important that, you know, we do what we can to regulate in a way to protect health and safety, but not unnecessarily burden folks with, uh, regulations that, um, would prohibit- safety, but not unnecessarily burden folks with regulations that would prohibit them from using a bike in a park. So I think more to come. I look forward to hearing what happens with the Public Services Meeting on October 3rd? I'm sorry, Public Safety Meeting. I always say that. I always get that wrong. All right. All right. Well, whenever it happens, and maybe October, and seeing where that goes. I also want, I see Steve in the back there. Appreciate Steve Frevert with the Historic Valley Junction Foundation inviting me to join their executive committee last week or the week before, and had a very good conversation with them about things that they're seeing in the business district down there, Valley Junction. They're saying, on the one hand, a tremendous amount of business interest, as Mayor, you've shared with this council and folks all over the city, about how excited folks are to locate and do business in Valley Junction. But there are challenges, and there are challenges I think we've all heard about, challenges with respect to, you know, some infrastructure-related items. We had good conversations about parking questions and really about, you know, awareness and education where parking is and isn't, both in the business, both on Fifth Street, but also, you know, farmer's market and other circumstances, as well as property maintenance and issues that people have concern. Unfortunately, we did see the longest yard come down. We want to make sure that folks are investing or at least taking care of their property in a manner that it doesn't fall apart. And I appreciate the group sharing with me some concerns that exist and some real things that I saw with my eyes that caused some heartburn and was able to have some follow-up conversations with Gary and Paul, and hopefully we can get those things addressed so that those buildings stand for another, you know, century and a half. So anyway, it was a very good conversation down there. So Steve, thank you for that, and I'm hopeful that we, as a council, can take a look at what we can do to help encourage property owners to continue to maintain their properties so we don't have the longest yard situation happen elsewhere. And that covers my comments for this time.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Hartman.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, thanks to the Taste of the Junction. I mentioned those comments. I wanted to say congratulations to the Chamber for their president's legacy reception that they had last week. I think Mayor Trimble and Mayor Hudson was also there as they celebrated and thanked folks that have been a part of the Chamber's success. So great, great event there. But I want to lift up a couple of individual staff from West Des Moines for something that happened on Friday night and how quickly they came to resolve it. And so oftentimes, when things don't work well in our city, we have lots of people that come and complain, and, you know, it goes downhill from there. But on Friday night, I was at home, and I received a call from a dear friend who was in the junction with her daughter, who had come in from Chicago and noticed some very racist graffiti in Valley Junction. It had the N-word and a few other things, okay? And she called, and she indicated, Renee, she took a picture of it, actually, and she sent it to me. And I, of course, was appalled, as anyone else seeing that racist graffiti right there in the junction, right before a festival that we're having, the Taste of the Junction. So I immediately sent a note to Chief Scott via text, and Chief Scott and I communicated, and he said, "Have her file a report," of which she did, and talked to what she called a very nice lady that walked her through the steps and who ultimately called her to let her know how things were resolved. I'd like to thank Gary Rank for his immediate response to this. I think within an hour, city staff were down there painting over this graffiti on a Friday night before the holiday. And I want to say thank you for that. I want to say thank you for that because I don't take that kind of quick response for granted. They could have very well said, "Oh, we'll get to it. We'll see whatever," but they dealt with it so soon and so quickly and so responsibly. And some people might say it's their jobs, and I agree it is, but sometimes they go above and beyond to get this resolved within an hour. And Chief texted me when it was finally all done and said that we've got this taken care of. Thank you, Director Rank, for you or your staff getting down there to take care of what could have been a disaster for the Taste of the Junction, to see that kind of graffiti right there in the middle of our festival. So the world is what it is. I recognize that. But Chief Scott, I want to thank you so much, and I want to thank you, Director Rank, for taking care of it Friday night after 8:30, 9 o'clock, going down there physically to handle that business. So I rested well Friday night, knowing that that was done. And my friend that reported it, so that she was impressed that she even got a call back saying they're down there taking care of it. That is service to the nth degree, and I want to thank you for that. Yeah. Yeah, let's give it up. That's good service. I am Chair of Public Safety, so I look forward to the meeting that we're going to have to hear all the issues around e-bikes. So I welcome dialogue and discussion and input and engagement. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay. Councilwoman Trevillian.
It's going to shock everybody. Yes, I do have some comments.
All right.
First of all, I want to start off by stating that the Shriners, of which I'm a member, hosted a Central State Shrine Convention here in West Des Moines. It started on Wednesday and ended on Sunday. There was well over 1,000 people from seven different states reaching to Colorado, Arkansas, Oklahoma, that were here for this convention. And I just want to say thank you to the city staff, and I'm not going to name names because I'm not exactly sure who all was involved, but I know every department, to some degree, was involved. I just want to say thank you for all the assistance that you gave our members out at the Ziegiz Shrine that were organizing this conference, convention, and it was very well-attended, and it did obviously bring in a lot of money to the economy for hotel motel restaurants, things like that. So thank you, all of the city staff that made that, helped make that a success. The other thing I want to talk about is what Mr. Stevens says on the first page here down towards the bottom. The tougher solution on his, with the e-bikes in the parks. The tougher solution, find another place for the kids to jump e-bikes. It's important for kids to defy gravity. Seriously, it's what makes great adults. I couldn't agree with that more. And a lot of you probably don't know it here on the council or some of the staff because you weren't around then, but it dates back probably 12 years ago, maybe 14. I proposed that we get an OHV, Off Highway Vehicle Park, here in West Des Moines. What I was proposing, which is now the boat ramp down there at First and Raccoon River, it was a contaminated site, so there could be no construction, you know, digging of the ground. You had to take care of the contamination. It didn't mean that you couldn't come in and fill and make these jumps, unfortunately. And I took some of the city staff with me up to the OHV park by Waterloo. Unfortunately, I couldn't get enough support from staff or council to make that happen, but I think it's something that we need to seriously look at for this region. We've got them in Bussey, the Waterloo area, Fort Dodge, but nothing here in the Des Moines area. And there's got to be some land someplace because when my son, son was little, up until, I guess, 14, when he broke his tibia, when he took a bad fall and mom says the bike's going away, I took the four-wheeler and he took his dirt bike, and we had a blast at these different parks. And it's something that, it's a controlled environment. It's all it is, off-highway vehicles. So there's state money that's out there for it. I just think that we, and Matt, this maybe falls to you at the MPO, maybe this is something that we need to look at regionally and see if we can't make this happen. Because it used to be that your dirt bikes were gas-powered and weighed a lot and things like that. Now that you're getting the electric dirt bikes, which go even faster, have more torque, they're lighter weight, they're getting a lot more prevalent. Yeah, I think it's time that we need to look at this again. Obviously, First Street and Raccoon River is not an option at this point, but there's got to be something maybe still in West Des Moines or at least in the metro area that we couldn't get one of these things and give these kids a safe place to go ride and not be tearing up the parks. So I guess I challenge us to see if we can make that happen.
Well, and I would just comment, I mean, we probably are due to, you know, as Parks and Rec Advisory Board, to go back and start dreaming about some of these quality of life amenities that we've been so successful bringing here, you know, through public-private partnerships. And I would mention that we do have a single-track trail at South Woods Park. Now, I don't know if e-bikes are allowed on that single-track trail, but we do have one of those, and we've expanded that single-track trail. So we do have off-roading for bikers and hikers, but Kevin, maybe that's an idea that needs to be pursued.
Yeah, but that's for, I guess, the e-bikes. I don't know that the, that trail particularly allows the electric dirt bikes, and I guess that's what I'm focusing on, is the electric dirt bikes.
Sure. Okay. Anything else, Kevin?
No, that's it.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. With that, we're going to move on to item four, Consent Agenda. Are there any items that any council person would like to have polled and voted on separately? If not, I would take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, moved.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's moved and seconded.
Four yes.
Okay. Item five, old business. We do not have any old business. Item six, public hearings. Item 6A. Let me do that again, my mic was off. Item five, old business. We don't have any old business items. Item six, public hearings. Item 6A. This is a time and a place for a public hearing to consider Cedar Ridge Lot 27 and Cedar Ridge Plat 3, Outlet Y, 9239 Cedar Ridge Drive. amend the zoning map to establish single-family residential zoning initiated by KRM Development LLC. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice is published?
August 15th, 2025, in the Des Moines Register.
And have you received any written comments in this hearing?
The planned zoning commission, by a vote of five yes with two absent, adopted a resolution recommending approval of the rezoning request.
Okay. Anybody from the audience who would like to address the council on item 6A, please come to the podium. Give us your name and address for the record. Anybody online, hit star six to unmute yourself and do the same. Is there anybody either in the chamber or online that would like to address the council on this item? Okay. Hearing and seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and we've got an ordinance amendment for approval, the first reading, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move consideration of the first reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the dais? Okay, please vote.
Four yes. Norintending official zoning map of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2024, by mending Title IX zoning, Chapter IV zoning districts and maps.
Move approval of the first reading.
Second.
Four yes.
Okay. Item 6B, this is a time and a place for a public hearing to consider 2025 digital enterprise network expansion initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice is published?
August 15th, 2025, in the Des Moines Register.
And have you received any written comments in this hearing?
None, Your Honor.
Okay. Anybody in the audience who would like to address the council on item 6B, please come to the podium. Give us your name and address for the record. Anybody online, hit star six to unmute yourself and do the same. Is there anybody in the chamber or online that would like to address the council on Okay. Hearing and seeing no one, we've got two resolutions and a motion we can take at the same time, and there are no outstanding issues.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Okay, it's removed and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes. I asked at the Public Services Council meeting, or Council Committee meeting on Monday about this, that is this going to, initial focus be on the existing areas of West Des Moines that are not currently served? And I was told yes. So anybody that's listening online or is going to be reading the minutes, let it be known that we're going to concentrate on existing areas first and then go to new subdivisions in the city. And I'm also surprised at the bids. I mean, that's a significant difference between the two bidders. So I'm sure staff has reviewed this with a fine-tooth comb, but I really hope that this is accurate and there's not going to be a million change orders to get them closer to that second bidder number, so.
Thank you for that specificity, Kevin, with regards to the priority in which we are doing these projects. Appreciate that. Okay. Any other discussion before we vote? All right. Hearing done. Please vote.
Four yes.
Okay. Moving on to item seven, new business. Item 7A, Casey's Ashworth 88, 885 88th Street, accept surety and release final plat to create one lot for commercial development and one outlot, Casey's Marketing Company. We've got a resolution accepting surety and approving and releasing the final plat, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move acceptance.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. Is there anybody in the audience or online that would like to address council on this Okay, is there any discussion on the dais? Okay, please vote.
Four yes.
Okay. Item 7B, West Town Center Plat 3, generally southwest corner of 22nd Street and West Town Parkway, accept surety and release final plat to create four lots for existing and proposed commercial development, West Town Center Associates LLC. Got a resolution accepting surety and legal documents and approving and releasing the final plat, and there are no outstanding issues.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's removed and seconded. Is there anybody in the audience or online that would like to address council on this Okay, is there any discussion on the dais? Okay, please vote.
Four yes.
Okay. Item 7C, Ridge View at Moffett Lake, 3760 Southeast Moffett Lake Road. Approve the preliminary plat to create 132 lots for single-family residential development, nine outlots and one street lot. Ridge View at Moffett Lake LLC. We've got a resolution for approval, the preliminary plat, and there are no outstanding issues, but there are four now conditions of approval. One related to certain public utility easements being located in the front yard, another being the city granting a temporary deferral of the required buffer, a third condition being the developer slash property owner encouraging driveways off of local roads rather than minor collectors or above, and finally, the developer property owner agreeing to build a temporary access that functions like a local street and is removed once local streets are built serving as a secondary public access to the development. Somebody want to move approval of the resolution?
So moved.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Is there anybody online or in the chamber that would like to address council on this item? Is there any discussion on the dais? Okay, hearing none.
Four yes.
Okay. Item 7D, ordinance amendment. Amend Title IV Health and Safety Regulations, Title VII Public Ways and Property, Title VIII Building Regulations, and Title X Subdivision Regulations to modify regulations pertaining to second dwelling units. City initiated. We've got an ordinance amendment for approval, the first reading, and there are no outstanding issues.
Motion to approve the first reading.
Okay, it's removed. Is there a second? It's moved and seconded. Is there anybody in the audience or online that would like to address council on this item? Okay, any discussion on the dais? Okay, please vote.
Four yes. Norintending the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2024. Title IV Health and Safety Regulations and Title VII Public Ways and Property and Title VIII Building Regulations and Title X Subdivision Regulations pertaining to second dwelling units. Motion to approve the first reading.
Second.
I think we need to do a revote on that one.
Okay. Let's reset the voting machine and we'll do a revote.
It's ready.
All right. Please vote.
Four yes.
Okay. Item 7E, we've got a motion to approve traffic code amendments, special stops required, 92nd Street and West Town Parkway, 89th Street and Oxford Drive, 90th Street and Oxford Drive, and South Gentle Flats Avenue and Westport Drive. Again, we've got an ordinance amendment for approval, the first reading, there are no outstanding... got an ordinance amendment for approval, the first reading, there are no outstanding issues. This was also approved unanimously by the Public Services City Council Subcommittee.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there anybody that would like to address council on this item? Okay. Is there any discussion on the dais? Okay, please vote.
For yes. Norintending the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa 2024 by menning provisions pertaining to the traffic code relating to official traffic controls.
Move approval of the first reading?
Second.
Okay, please vote.
For yes.
Okay. Item seven F. We've got a motion for approval of traffic code amendments. Delete special yield required, 92nd Street and West Town Parkway, A Street and Center Street, A Street and Office Park Road, Fourth Street and Grand Avenue. We've got an ordinance amendment for approval, the first reading, and there are no outstanding issues. And this was also approved unanimously by the Public Services City Council Subcommittee.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there anybody that would like to address council on this item? Or any discussion on the dais? Okay. Hearing none. Please vote.
For yes. Norintending the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa 2024 by menning provisions pertaining to the traffic code relating to official traffic controls.
Okay, who moved? Move, I'm sorry, move approval.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Please vote.
For yes.
Okay. Item seven G. We've got a motion for approval of traffic code amendments, no parking zones, Maple Street, 11th Street to 100 feet east of 11th Street on the south side of Maple. Again, we got an ordinance amendment for approval, the first reading, there are no outstanding issues. And this was also approved unanimously by the Public Services City Council Subcommittee.
Motion to approve the first reading?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there anybody that would like to address council on this item? Any discussion on the dais? All right, please vote.
For yes. Norintending the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa 2024 by menning provisions pertaining to the traffic code relating to official traffic controls.
Motion to approve the first reading?
Second.
Please vote.
For yes.
Okay. Item seven H. We've got a motion for approval of traffic code amendments to delete, to channelize intersections at Fourth Street and Grand Avenue. We've once again got an ordinance amendment for approval, the first reading, there are no outstanding issues. And like the other two ordinances, this was also approved unanimously by the Public Services City Council Subcommittee.
Motion to approve the first reading?
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Is there anybody in the audience or online that would like to address council on this item? Any discussion on the dais? Okay, please vote.
For yes. Norintending the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa 2024 by menning provisions pertaining to the traffic code relating to official traffic controls.
Motion to approve the first reading?
Second.
Okay, please vote.
For yes.
Okay. Item eight, receive, file, and/or refer. We've got nothing to receive, file, or refer. Item nine, other matters. Are there any other matters that any councilperson would like to raise at this time for the good of the order?